There's 12:06 on there, so that's today.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Wednesday, January 6, 2016 Town Council meeting. We'll begin, as always, the Pledge of Allegiance.
The lease institute flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll begin with the public forum. We'll open it at 7:01 and close it at 7:01 since there's nobody here.
Counsel Burns excused.
That's right. We should note that Counsel Burns is in excused absence. I will accept a motion on the minutes for December 16, 2015.
So moved.
Second discussion.
Tricia, I just had one typo. That's all. Just minor. On page three of the minutes, into the third paragraph, Counselor Thompson stated that the budget committee is how it starts.
Yeah.
Second sentence, she last Monday, she said. That's all. Very, very minor. Otherwise, I didn't see anything. Thank you.
Any other comments in the minutes?
Sounds like a song. One, very minor one, on page three of the minutes, under Committee Reports, it shows me making the comment, in the first paragraph under Committee Reports, making the comment that what proposals were before them, this is the planning board, were well-reported. And I was referring there, and I think I said it was in the Administrator's report, it was well-reported by Diane. So it doesn't really say why it's well-reported, but it's the town planner that had done a good job of reporting. So that's it.
Any other comments? Mr. Minister of the Vote?
Counsel Pickering.
Aye.
Counsel Pike.
Aye.
Counsel Thompson.
Aye.
Counsel YC.
Aye.
Counsel Levy.
Aye.
Counsel Nazara.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
What do the Town Administrators?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is that the Secretary of State finally scheduled the presidential primary for February 9, and it will be at the high school, and the polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. We are going to need two councils on every shift because of just the volume of voters we're expecting this year. So I'll be sending out a schedule probably tomorrow so people can sign up, what's good times for everybody. And also, we're going to need a majority at the closing in order to certify the ballots inside in the box. So just to plan for that day. The next item is that I just want to provide the council an update with the road management survey that's being conducted by UNH and the Stratford Regional Planning Commission. The Regional Planning Commission has completed the data collection. They have reviewed all of the town-owned roads and reviewed their conditions and has categorized them. They've also taken photos of them as well. And the next step is now UNH is going to take that data and work on a report with recommendations and forecastings. This should be completed sometime within this next month. The only thing would be students coming back from school because they're going to be assisting with that. It may be probably close to mid-February to end of February. But then we'll have a presentation to the council with their findings. On the agenda this evening for first reading is a resolution to enter into a consulting agreement with Municipal Resources, Inc., to conduct the organizational study that the Town Council has requested. I did meet with the Chief Operating Officer of MRI Today and received a contract late this afternoon. Originally, they were going to have a contract not to exceed $40,000. We asked for a specific number, and so it's going to be a flat rate of $38,000. I haven't read the whole contract yet, so I will provide that to the council when we're ready. It's probably your next packet. So we will be moving forward with that. And what we'll have to do is amend that resolution at the next meeting. The town, along with Stratford and Newfields, have negotiated a one-year extension with Casella Waste Management, formerly Best Way, to continue to collect our recycling and waste. The three communities negotiate this together to attempt to get better prices. We will see an increase in the rates for both recycling and waste. In addition, we'll see a change in the way they determine the commodity rate. Currently, there's no market for recyclables. We were discussing briefly, one of the big purchases, repurchases of aluminum and other metals is China. And China's economy is not good right now, so nobody's purchasing those materials to reuse them. So the commodity markets just aren't there. On the agenda tonight is the first reading for an extension. I'll have more backup information in the next packet. The one-year deal will allow the three communities to solicit proposals from other companies as well as Casella to enter into a longer deal next year. We just want to make sure we have one more year to see what happens, too. It's sort of up in the air for both sides because Casella was kind of surprised with it as well, that they've just been taken ahead. So that's why they have to do something with the commodity markets. Not on your written report tonight, we received notice from the New Hampshire Department of Transportation that they will be holding a meeting next Thursday at 7:00 p.m. here at the Town Hall to update people on the Route 108 widening project. This is the North Main Street to Durham project. They just want to give, solicit input from the officials as well as the public and to tell everybody where they are. They have had a delay due to a law, I don't know if it was actually a lawsuit or an appeal, with an environmental permit in the Durham side of it. So that's why they're not further along than they would be right now. But they should be updating that next Thursday night here at 7:00 p.m. in the auditorium. And that's all I have for tonight, Mr. Chair.
Questions, Counsel Burns?
Steve, it says Stratford Regional Planning has done the road overview. So we give that to UNH. We've done it in the past. And are there other entities that evaluate? I guess my question is, what makes UNH, you know, the entity that would give us advice as to how to approach the roads?
Price. We could have gone to an engineering firm, and actually, we did look at it, but the price would have been probably three times what we're paying UNH to do it. UNH has, they receive money from DOT, as well as the Federal Highway Administration, for what they call the T-Square, which is Transportation Technology Center. It's basically professors and students who are in the engineering program, review everything, and come forward with that. That's why UNH is normally the one to do it.
Okay. Is that the norm for most communities, honestly?
Yeah. Smaller communities, yes. Larger communities usually either have an in-house engineering firm.
Like, if this was, just for sake of argument, Portsmouth or Manchester, would they do it in-house?
Yeah. They would have an engineer do it.
You know, the reason I'm asking is because the last time we had this done, you know, they came in with, you know, numbers at the time, I think it was at least five years ago now, but I could, four or five years ago, I believe, that were sort of in the stratosphere. And they didn't seem to me to have a practical aspect to it, which is, I think, why nothing really materialized. I mean, a little bit of it did, but really, not a whole lot. And I was just wondering, you know, if not an engineering firm, are there companies that actually do the work, that may not want to bid on it, that could advise the town just to get another opinion? Because if we get, and I'll just, if we get another, you know, $300,000, $500,000 a year for the next nine years, or something like that, I suppose we could bond it. You know, it's not something that, frankly, I'm excited about doing bonding roads, but other communities have done that. I think Durham did it and whatnot. But, I mean, when you're talking about this kind of money, does it not serve our interest to at least have someone evaluate or get a second opinion for something of this magnitude? Because this is pretty pricey.
Well, there's two parts to this. First is, we discussed this, when we discussed it the first time, going with UNH to do this, we asked them to come up with two answers. One is, okay, how much should we be doing each year, and what's the cost? That's the one that you're discussing, the $500,000, or whatever number. With the other number, we asked, well, if we don't do that, give us a list of the roads that we need to do so we can pick them off. So you can say, like, I'm not saying these are, but Ash Swamp Road is the top priority, and then the next one is Elm Street, or the next one down is Granite. And then you can say, look, we're only going to spend $200,000 this year. So for the most bang for our buck, we can do, we'll do this street, this street, and this street on this list, and not go all the way down. So yet, we'll still be behind. They can still say, look, we're doing $500,000. You should be doing that amount. But this is how we're going to start knocking it down. So we asked them not to just put it in the list of that amount each year. The second part of this is, yes, you're correct. And I think what we would do is, once we have the engineering firm on board to be our consulting engineers, that would be the group that would look at the numbers, too, and say, look, you know, I think we could do it for less, or I disagree with what they're doing for what their figures are. The study for UNH is just, is not, is not in engineering, it's an estimate. It doesn't take into consideration, like, okay, we need to replace box culverts versus metal culverts in certain areas, and looking at water flows and those kind of things. That gets more into it when we get closer to the finalized. This is more of the big picture, how we need to prioritize it.
Okay, so if, let's say we don't get an engineer, do you mind if I, so let's say we don't get an engineering firm as a consultant, just say we don't, and we hire people like we've done when we need work done, we call someone, and they give us a price and whatnot. Regardless, if we wanted to get a second opinion, is that something you would be in favor of?
Oh, yeah. I mean, I think before we go out to bid for anything.
We didn't do that last time at all.
Right. I think anytime you go out to bid, once we have a situation like this, yeah, absolutely, you'd get a second opinion. You'd say, what would the actual estimate to do this road would be? And you'd take the tonnage and what would actually need to be done, and go from there. Yeah. This is just the more ballpark estimate versus the actuals.
My last thing on this is just, you know, there's such a practical side of this, as far as, you know, traffic. You know, some roads may be really bad, but don't get a lot of traffic. And it seemed to me that that last go-around, and I think Phil was the only one on the council at that time, it seemed like there was just a certain level of, for lack of a better word, common sense that was applied to that. I'm not disparaging them.
Yeah.
It's just, you know, they sort of came in, I think they did the best they could with the information. Some of it was quite obvious. But there was, I just don't know how much they interacted with Rick or people locally, or I don't know if any traffic counts were done, or any of that stuff.
Yeah. They don't give the traffic counts. This is just every road, what's it cost to bring it up. It's not to recommend, well, this road only gets, you know, 20 cars a day versus this one gets 500 cars a day. That's more of a policy decision here and with department heads and myself.
But if we don't know, and that's my point, if we don't know what is critical, you know, and then we're voting on, you know, doing one over another, that, and for me, that's what was lacking a little bit the last go-around. I don't know that it had that, you know, practical aspect to it. I don't know how else to say it.
Yeah. It doesn't have the prioritizing by volume. It has prioritizing by condition.
And I think, you know, the former is pretty critical to this.
Absolutely. But I think that's something that this group, as a policy-setting body, would ultimately come in and say, you know what, these are the roads we think are more priority than this one this year.
I mean, I have more to say about it, but I'll make sure other people have lights on. Counsel Pike. Counsel Strathwaite.
Just going back to the cost of their estimates, if I remember right, at that time, they did say that they would tweak, you know, so I think they said, oh, it's going to be, whatever, half a million dollars a year. But if your budget is $250,000, then we'll make that work.
Right.
And so I would assume that they'll do that again?
Well, that's what we're, and that's what I've made sure that we did, is that, don't come in just reporting that you need to spend $500,000 a year. Allow us to pick a lower number if need be.
And why?
Right. And that's the key. And they completely understood that. And I told them right out, go, this died because everyone got sticker shock from $500,000 a year. And I don't want to see that happen again.
But at the time, they did, I mean, I remember it pretty vividly, that they said that they would tweak it.
When they came for the proposal, or back in 2012, or now?
No, back in 2012.
Okay. I don't know.
They did tweak it, but it wasn't at 250. It was that, like, they gave us, they did rework it.
Yeah. But I'm asking them to let us basically pick the roads after?
I thought they, I thought that we actually said, we were going to, we asked them, excuse for this, I thought we actually said at 250, what can we get?
And that's what we're saying, yes.
That's part of what I think we said this time around. Because that was around what we're spending. We wanted to know what that order was.
Yes, they do know that.
And to sort of piggyback on what Counsel Levy was saying, this is, road condition should be one criteria. Road use should be another criteria. I think there's at least two criteria that when we assess the order.
Right. And this is-
But we shouldn't, we're not road use experts. Someone should have given us the numbers on road use.
This is not, this is a road condition survey.
So how do we get the information on road use?
We can go to, I think Stratford Regional Planning will do counts for us. But I think a lot of it, you're not going to get the numbers by putting the tubes across the road because it's just so infrequent. A lot of it's just knowledge. You know that the side road's not going to be as busy as a main road.
We know that, but like, I guess, I'm trying to think of the main roads we have that get a lot of traffic.
I mean, we-
That are not state roads.
Yeah. We can always do a road count for those.
Yeah.
But I mean, if you're comparing-
Raymond Lane is not getting that traffic.
Right. Versus Grant Road, right. Those are the two separate ones. But if you just compare an Ash Swamp to Grant Road, then, yeah, you probably want to do-
Ash Swamp to New Road.
Right. That kind of situation.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just one quickie. I think we're going to vote on it after, but just, with respect to the waste collection, and I should know this, but I usually bring it to the store. So is that something that's just added to everyone's taxes for collection, or do they go by usage, or how is that calculated?
It's, it is-
Pardon my ignorance. I should probably know.
I'm asking, are you asking for the individual homeowner, or are you asking for the town?
Well, when we do a contract, for example, for waste collection.
It's tonnage for the town. It's-
And then all, so all the taxpayers pay whether they use it or not, or?
Nope. We first have the money that we pay for the paper bag system. So when they pay the money for the orange bags. It does not cover the entire system, so we do subsidize it through tax dollars.
Oh, okay. So a piece of is paid for by the taxpayer.
Correct.
Do we have any idea what the blend is?
I don't off the top of my head.
I mean, is it 40, 60, 50, 50, 20, 80?
I would say-
Just ballpark. I'm not holding you to it.
60, 40, that we subsidize it. Because the thing you run into with the bags is that you don't want to overprice them. Then you lose all your revenue. So.
The only reason I brought it up is because I was thinking, some people, you know, may use a lot more, but other people are really subsidizing them.
Yeah. And actually, that's why you do the paper bag. So if a family has three bags a week, they're paying more than the, you know, the senior citizen who has one bag a week. Or not even one bag. They could buy a smaller bag.
But when it comes to the subsidy?
That's everybody.
It's everybody. Okay.
Thank you. Counsel Pike.
It's not just the revenue, too. I don't think you want to set the price so high. At some rate, you'll start to increase people that will just go in the woods and dump trash. So you don't want it too-
It's happening now on every major artery. I know what you mean, though. It's-
Or go to a private company.
Right.
There's private companies that operate to you.
Yep.
Well, as long as it's predictable. If we're subsidizing it, and people go to a private company, it's not as hard as that.
I mean, if you had a huge situation.
If they get it all at once, they have to get used to that.
You'd have to reduce the budget over time and stuff. And the worst part there is, you may have, the private company only takes the waste, but not the recyclables, because there's no market for the recyclables that year. So we still have to collect recyclables, and we're not making money off that.
Make nothing off that.
Right.
Just one other quickie on that. You know, there was another thing in there about people that have dumpsters, you know, so when they bring a dumpster. So those people are really paying for the dumpster.
Yep.
And then they're paying for the, you know, so it really, is this just the way it's done everywhere?
Yeah. I mean, it-
Because it really isn't reasonable if you don't-
We're actually fairer than a lot of places because we do charge per bag. Other places, you just pay your taxes and you get your garbage taken, whether or not you buy a dumpster, which you're paying to have it hauled out, or you're the senior citizen with the little bag once a week. You're all paying through your taxes. So.
Thank you.
It's always some level of assumption that house size equates to amount of garbage.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's not totally true, but you live in a large family house versus a small apartment or small condo.
Right.
I get what you're saying, though. Any other questions? Committee reports. Anybody have a committee report? We've had the night of the holiday. That's true.
I didn't have a committee report, but I did have a conversation, and it might be good for Steve to just have, maybe you can help shepherd this, Steve. I did have a conversation with someone on the planning board, and we were trying to shoot for maybe the planning board could have some action on the economic development situation, on 152, and on, you know, our property, the Wilson and the Ham and whatnot, by the end of this fiscal year. And that seemed to be something that they thought was reasonable, because it's been sort of dormant for about four months now. I don't think we've had a meeting for at least three or four months. So anyway, if we could kind of shoot for that, at least, we got, you know, we could be on the calendar, even if it doesn't, you know, so another year doesn't go by. So, anyway, thank you.
It's the land subcommittee of the council met before this, went through, confirmed what we decided in the first meeting, or talked through a few other pieces, came up with a list of parcels that we think are right to sell. Steve has been directed to go to a real estate agent, the one he's been working with for the other properties, and get an assessment. Gets, there's a few parcels that maybe we can put together and sell as one, as opposed to separate ones. And he's then going to come back to our subcommittee, and then we'll come to the council with the recommendations.
Do we have, is there a list that we can take a look at?
There's not a physical list right here, but we'll get the list out to everyone. See if there are no other subcommittees. All business. I will accept a motion on Resolution 2015-16-29. Authorize the Town Administrator to enter into a lease agreement with the New Market Community Church to house the New Market Town Clock.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Steve, do you want to brief?
This came about after all the discussions we had earlier with the steeple, and who owns what, and the rights to the steeple versus the clock at the community church. We thought it'd be good, you know, for two things. One, we outline exactly our responsibilities via a lease. And two, what would we pay as part of that to sort of assist with the housing? And that would be our lease payments on a monthly basis, on a yearly basis. We talked, and I talked to the, I believe he's the chair of the trustees. And originally, it was, the lease was $2,500. We did put in provisions for growth since it is a 20-year lease. We did a minimum of 1%, maximum of 4%, but the lease payment would be increased by the Consumer Price Index for Boston Urban annually. The payment will be made in September, since that number's not known. We'll do it by the fiscal year. So we'll know in July, it'll be July, you won't know until August, so we'll have to make the payment by September 1. This year, we would make a payment before that for $2,500, and then in September, for the new budget, we'll add, we'll give another lease payment for whatever the amount is, $25,000 plus the rate. You know, I did look at the difference. I did a small spreadsheet that, just what the rate could be. The minimum, after 20 years, the difference would be between $2,500. The amount would be $3,050 if we only had a 1% increase each year. The maximum would go from $2,500 to $5,477 after 20 years. So that, the last year would be the fiscal year ending 2036. That's just a proposal, and I'll refer to the council.
Questions? Counselor Thompson, since you're knocking stuff.
First question, on rent, in Section 3, Steve, you had mentioned tied to the CPI with a minimum of 1% and a maximum of 4.
Yep.
Why would you even specify the percentage? Why not just tie it to the CPI?
Because if there was a CPI of 7 or 10, which we don't usually see, I thought that would be too high.
Okay.
And on the flip side, they didn't want to have a year that the amount went below the previous years, because you can have a CPI be negative.
As we have seen recently.
Right. So we negotiated, went back and forth, and this is where we ended up.
Okay. In Section 6, which had to do with diligence and maintenance and care and all of that, what I didn't specifically see, and my question is, does this cover the lesser handling regular maintenance of the steeple?
It's-
In specifically Section 6, Paragraph C, you know, so that it doesn't fall into disrepair, in which case it necessitates a $10,000 repair where it could have been done at $100.
That's our intention. I mean, much like here, we could, you know, we can't tie the hands of another, I can't tie the hands of another council. They can't tie the hands of another board of trustees for the church. So they could say, you can always say, yes, you need to upkeep it. I think our argument at that point was, would be, you're not upkeeping it. We're going to pull our mechanism and do something else with it. So.
Okay. So we are comfortable, the attorneys are comfortable, that we do not have an issue with regular maintenance up there. If one piece of siding needs to get replaced, that that will happen and not wait till it's 12.
That's correct. This is, and our attorney actually wrote the lease.
Bad example, but-
Yeah. But I asked our attorney to write the lease, just to make sure our interests were covered, and their attorney reviewed it. That's where we came to.
Okay. And then one more, if I can just clarify, the first payment, because you're talking about September of '16 would be the next fiscal year, but there would be a fiscal year '16 as well?
Correct.
Okay. Which would be January or February, or whenever this gets ratified.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
Counseler.
So Steve, just to back up a little bit, this is the first time we've done this, or has there ever in the history been something like this before?
There's been no written agreement between the church and the town over the clock at all.
Okay. So in the past, had the town ever, you know, given this type of money over, you know, the 20-year period?
We're talking hundreds of years. We're talking when the church was built.
No, but I mean, I apologize, in the last 20, 30 years.
Not that I know of.
So for, in essence, for the last 20 or 30 years, we've maintained the clock. For example, when they had to do the repairs, you know, a few years ago, we had the service gentleman go up there, the one that knows how to, you know, work that service for that, because it's kind of complicated, I guess. And we paid for that. Now, just so I understand, this money is going to be going, we're leasing, we're paying toward a portion for the maintenance of the steeple?
No. We're paying a lease to host our mechanism. We own the clock.
Oh, so we're basically saying, the clock, we're paying you to let us put the clock in your-
Right. We're renting that box.
And the theory behind it, it's kind of a circuitous way to go about it. The theory behind it is they're going to take that money, and they're going to use that to maintain the physical structure, so to speak.
I would highly hope so.
It is required in the lease that they maintain it.
Yeah. That they maintain it. And we can't tell them where they put their money.
No, it just, you know what it is? Honestly, it just seems like a, I'm trying to think of a diplomatic way to say, manipulative way to address this. You know what I'm saying? Because it really, you know, we can't just come out and say, we're giving you this money so you can maintain it, because that wouldn't be legal.
We are renting the space to host it, but we have the right, because we do have the right to withdraw our mechanism from there. You actually do see that comment now. Concord Downtown has one. I think Haverhill has one downtown. They take a mechanism from an old clock tower that they may have been in, and they just build a nice town clock in the middle of town, on a smaller tower. We have that right still. But this is just saying, look, we understand the importance of us being in there, and that their need for a revenue source for us being in there, we'll pay a rent, an annual rental payment. we'll pay a rent, an annual rental payment to host us.
So over twenty years, you could be talking, give or take, fifty, fifty grand or so?
Yeah.
Give or take, depending upon the CPI. We've never done this, you know, see, what sort of bothers me about it is, I'd rather do it on a as-needed, in a way, basis. I mean, I get the.
But you can't do that. We have to have an agreement on why we're doing this, and it's, this is, this is the cleanest.
It's a very cute way of, does any, do you want?
Well, to me, I, personally, I think this formalizes the relationship between, like, right now, up to this point, it's just been, we know it's our clock, and they know it's their tower. There's been no legal binding, there's been, but, nothing binds that. There's nothing that says we have to maintain the clock, other than we own it. This actually, like, to me, formalizes the relationship between the clock, our clock.
I thought the town had, am I incorrect, didn't the town have a legal obligation to maintain the clock? Because we own the clock.
It's, yeah, but there's no.
We're already doing that, this is separate from that.
Oh, so.
Nowhere is it written.
Oh, so technically.
Their responsibilities are and our responsibilities.
So technically, we could say, okay, the clock isn't running, so twice a day it'll be right. That's life.
Yeah.
That's what you're really saying.
And, and it's actually common for New England towns to have clocks in churches. There were, there were gifts around the centennial, and that's when they built a lot of big steeples in the communities, and so the town would put it in the meeting house. Well, the meeting house also did turn into the church, and then kept being the church over town when the town halls had other buildings. So, it's very, it's common that this stuff, this happens.
I did come up with twenty-five hundred was just an arbitrary number.
We were trying to think of a number that would seem fair for an annual payment, and we thought twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Counselor Pike.
Yeah, I, I, it seems to me a reasonable agreement, it means, you know, I think most of the citizenry for, for, if we're, you know, a stithen that's not that great, would like to see the, the steeple still be there, they'd like to have the, that be part of the town, part of the appearance, and, and, but it's separation, so it's not something we can, we can make happen. But this is a, you know, this moves, uh, you know, we, I, to me, it seems like a reasonable resolution of something that, uh, most of us would like to see happen.
Counselor. The, just so everybody's aware, unless I'm mistaken, so we'll pay this money, and then on top of that, we'll have to do the maintenance of the clock, correct?
And when we say clock, I just want a clarification. A clock is not a face or a hand, or the box around it. The clock is that mechanism that turns the, the hand. So it's just that mechanism on the inside that we have to do.
Do we have any idea what we've, well, wait a minute, if a hand fell off, we'd, we'd get a new hand.
But, yeah, it's.
I mean, we're not going to leave it, the mechanism working.
We don't spend, we don't spend, I mean, we pay the guy to go up, to go up, to keep it and wind it, and annual maintenance may be a few hundred to a thousand dollars. And we have a capital reserve fund that we withdraw from for that, that's been built up over time.
Okay, right, thank you.
Um, kind of alluded to it when I was in discussion with Counselor Levy, but my personal opinion before we asked for the vote, is that I like the idea of formalizing, having a, like, formally written, what, whose obligation is what. And up to this point, it's been just like town lore, we just sort of remember, council to council, what it's supposed to be, so. I like, I like that it's a legal document now. Any other comments?
Just a quick, if you don't mind, um, along those lines, I mean, I'm happy to see that this has been resolved, because, you know, they, when the, when Pastor Marsden was here, and the other people from the church, you know, it was a little, it was a little uncomfortable, and I, and I felt for them, in, even though that I don't support, uh, the town giving funds to the church in any way. Um, but I think that this is a, a resolution that we can all live with. So, um, I'm happy to see that it has come to this. So thanks for your work on this, Steve.
Uh, Counselor Pickering.
Back in, I believe it was eighteen seventy-two, when the town purchased that clock, and it's a rare one. Um, back in the days of handshakes, and we're just cleaning up, uh, we're in a legal world now, and I think we're cleaning that up by finding a, a means, and this is a good stab at it.
And if it, if it turns into, they, there, there needs to be a major renovation or reconstruction to that tower, what then, Steve? We're locked into the twenty-five, and it would be the, because I'm just asking, would it be then the obligation of the church to address that?
Yeah, that's, that's what's outlined here, that we're only obligated for the church, for the.
Well, no, I know, but I'm just asking, so if we're only obligated to that, and then, you know, whoops, there's a fifteen thousand dollar repair that needs to be made?
That's, that falls onto the church, because it's not, it's their steeple. We're, we're renting space in their steeple for our clock.
And if, for, I'm just asking for all the unintended consequences, I have no tug in this fight. At the end of the day, if they don't have the means to, you know, to maintain that, you know, maybe there's an act of God, or something happens, and the insurance company won't pay a certain amount, do they? In other words, what if they can't maintain it, what if they don't have the finances?
We don't have the right to maintain their building, and we withdraw our mechanism and do something else with it.
Okay, so if they, if a bill came up in this strange scenario, and it couldn't be addressed by the church, the town obviously wouldn't.
We can't.
Be allowed to do that, and then we'd have to come up with either a fundraiser or some creative way to deal with it, or, okay.
The clock goes in our basement.
Right. If, if the steeple foul, we take our mechanism and.
And go home with it.
Like the baseball glove and.
Yeah, take our ball and go home, yes.
Is that it, Counselor Levy? Uh, seeing no other comments, Mr. Administrator, the vote.
Counselor Pickering.
Aye.
Counselor Pike.
Aye.
Counselor Thompson.
Aye.
Counselor Weinstein.
Aye.
Counselor Levy. Counselor Nazaro.
Aye.
Motion passes six, zero.
Um, would any counselor have an objection to, we're in new business correspondence, the first ordinance is incredibly long, does any counselor have an objection with me reading that in title only?
Wouldn't we have the solid waste?
Do it fast.
The, uh, ordinance regulating disposal of solid waste, it's about five pages long.
Oh, it's fine.
Uh, thank you, counselors. So, uh, first reading, ordinance number two thousand fifteen sixteen dash two, an ordinance regulating disposal of solid waste generated within the town of New Market, to include the curbside pickup of domestic or household waste and recyclables. Uh, for those watching at home, I highly encourage them to go online and get a, and read this, several pages long.
And just for the public, we have to have a public hearing at the next meeting, and the bill, the health officer and the public works director will be in to.
It's an ordinance.
Yeah, to present.
Um, resolutes, the next one, resolution two thousand fifteen sixteen dash thirty, authorizing the town administrator to enter into a one-year agreement with Casella Waste Systems for waste and recycling services. Whereas Casella Waste Systems currently provides the town with waste and recycling collection services, and whereas, in order to solicit proposals from other companies with our partnering community Stratum and New Fields, the town is seeking a one-year extension. And whereas, Casella has agreed to a one-year extension. Now therefore, be it resolved by the town of New Market, by the New Market Town Council, that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Casella for solid waste and recycling collectibles at the following rates. Collection services, MSW, ninety-five dollars per ton, recycling, one hundred eighty-six dollars per ton. Recycling, processing, marketing services, Stratum's, Stratum, New Market, and New Fields will be charged, rebated, an amount per ton equal to each month's average commodity revenue, minus seventy-five dollars per ton. For example, if the ACR for January twenty sixteen is fifty dollars per ton, each town will be charged twenty-five dollars per ton of recyclables collected during that month. If the ACR for February is eighty dollars per ton, each town will be rebated five dollars per ton of recyclables collected during that month. Casella will report the ACR rebate charge calculation monthly. However, the towns will not be responsible for payment or be rebated until thirty days after the end of the twelfth-month extension period on or about February first, two thousand seventeen. First reading, January sixth, two thousand sixteen. And final resolution, resolution two thousand fifteen sixteen dash thirty-one, authorizing the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Municipal Resources Incorporated to conduct an organizational structure and efficiency study of all town departments. Whereas, the town council adopted resolution two thousand fourteen fifteen dash forty-five, soliciting proposals to conduct an organizational structure and efficiency study for all town departments. And whereas, the town council appointed a subcommittee to review all proposals received. And whereas, the town council subcommittee and the town administrator believe Municipal Resources, Inc. of Meredith, New Hampshire is the most qualified firm to conduct this study. Now therefore, be it resolved by the New Market Town Council, that the town council authorizes the town administrator to enter into an agreement with Municipal Resources Incorporated for an amount not to exceed forty thousand dollars. First reading, January sixth, two thousand sixteen. And we know we are going to amend that to thirty-eight, based on the town administrator's report. Uh, correspondence and closing comments by counselors. Oh, Counselor Levy.
Did you see, anybody else? Did you just say that MRI was the most, was, was the most, um, in that read, uh, the, the most capable, or whatever, was that the terminology?
Qualified.
Yeah. I mean, because there were, not that it's a big deal, but there were several that were qualified, I think they were the best fit. So I don't know if you.
But the committee's.
I think, I think the phrase "this" study means most like, the one that we decided was the best, this particular study.
Okay.
We can, we can edit the words.
Yeah, it's not a big deal. I did want to, um, compliment, I did not get the officer's name, but on Sunday, I believe it was, um, evening, there was two cruisers on New Road looking for someone who was on foot, and that had presumably, um, been lurking around a house, and they were very professional. They were, um, I almost felt like I might get arrested, I had to clarify where I was, where I was from, and, uh, they were, you know, right on the job, and then a deer got hit further up the road, and I mentioned it to the officer, and it was removed the next morning, so I just wanted to compliment their professionalism. They were very, um, you know, they were on the money, and I did call the chief, and I thanked him for, you know, it was a pretty good-sized deer that was, uh, laying on the side of the road, which they, they did remove, or someone removed, so. Whom- whomever it was that took that, I, I don't know if it was the police, it might have been DPW, but thank you to them. Was it DPW, Steve?
It could have been.
Okay.
Yeah.
Could have been just someone that wanted a deer.
It could have been eaten, and it could have been eaten.
Yeah, I don't think they wanted, you know, this was, it was a pretty, yeah, it was a pretty bad accident, so, anyway.
Is that it, Counselor?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Pike.
Yeah, I, I know we're not discussing it now, but will we, for the, for the, um, sixteen dash thirty, the, the extension with Casella Waste Systems, I guess what I'm wondering, and I mean, I like the idea of recycling, I'm happy to participate in recycling. Uh, at the same time, there's been news reports going up before this, that's saying that the whole economics of recycling are, you know, I mean, I, you, you do it with the idea that it sort of pays for itself, and that there, there's this collection of useful items. And in some sense, though, you know, my understanding is, is that it costs a lot more to collect it. So I, I don't know that, you know, it, it may be that when we go over this, rather than just saying, well, is this the best way to get by for another year, I don't know what the other towns are doing, but it, it may be that it's important to sort of reexamine all our assumptions at that point. If, you know, if we're paying a lot more to recycle things, if it's, if the, if a lot of the cost associated, if for this is associated with recycling, uh, you know, are there elements of recycling that, that are not so expensive to do, and others that shouldn't even be in the mix? And, and maybe we'd need to have that conversation, too.
In other words, if we didn't recycle, what would we do, and how much would that cost?
You, you almost have to recycle, because the, the facilities don't use, they can't, when they get permitted, they can't accept. I mean, there's always something that's going to get through and go in the, the hole, but they have to say that they're trying to recycle a, a portion of it. Um, the, the things you could look at is, don't do curbside, and have a transfer station in which you stockpile things until markets get better. Uh, that's difficult, that's not convenient for the customer. We do the single stream because it's convenient for the customer, and we put all the responsibility on the, uh, firm, whoever, whoever it may be.
To distribute it properly, or whatever.
Right, and they, they can either, you know, you're right, they, we haven't, we haven't made money on recyclables probably since early two thousands. I haven't seen anything that came in, and that was, and that, in the back of the line, you'd almost have the, if you had a transfer station, and had somebody who is good in the commodity markets, look at it, it, the market's just not there. It, it's sort of one of those things, now you do it for the good.
Yeah, trying to strike a balance.
Yeah.
Somehow, yeah.
Okay.
We could have a more robust conversation about that. If there are certain numbers, though, you want to see, like, we should probably make sure that he.
Yeah, if you want to email me, I can make sure I can get the numbers.
Uh, Counselor Pickering.
Well, it's kind of a follow-up what Counselor Pike just mentioned. Uh, is Casella the only kid on the block currently, or?
We, we're doing a one-year extension.
I know it's an extension, but.
No, there's, there's other firms, it, there aren't as many, Casella actually bought out one that we had before. Um, I mean, last time we did this, we received four bids, Casella was one, plus the firm that we went with, so.
They bought Best Way, Steve?
Yeah, they did, I think it was shortly after we signed the agreement.
And has the service been commensurate to what it was prior?
Yeah, I haven't heard, I mean, right, at the first.
I think it's been better.
Yeah, first it was a little, because, because you had the learning curve of new people coming in, but I haven't gotten many, you know, the normal call, somebody missed my recycling bin, or something like that, but nothing, not some widespread issue.
They seem to have better drivers, they're not as crazy on those trucks. And they're not going so fast down my street.
Yeah.
I mean, I got to say, they're much more responsible than a few years ago.
I think Counselor Pickering.
I'm all set, thank you.
Any other counselors? All right, uh, first meeting of the new year done, happy new year. The next meeting is January twentieth.
Yep.
Uh, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Seven forty-seven, we are adjourned, thank you, counselors.